Captioning, mic tests for Tennessee captioning. Mic test for Tennessee captioning, mic test for Tennessee captioning. Mic test for Tennessee captioning, mic test for Tennessee captioning. Mic test for Tennessee captioning. Mic test for Tennessee captioning.
Everyone, it's April 28th, 5 o'clock, and we will call this session of the Huntsville City Council to order. This is a work session. For those of you who aren't familiar with how we do things here, work sessions are a little bit different from our regular meetings in that no action will be taken tonight. We're not going to be voting on anything. This is just an opportunity to focus on a limited topic, to have a discussion. Because of the Alabama Open Meetings Act, this is the only forum in which all members of the council can meet with the mayor to discuss items of interest. You'll see, we have a very limited agenda tonight. The agenda item will be a presentation by the administration on law enforcement options, followed by comments and responses from council members. There will be no public comment, because again, this is a work session, not a regular council meeting. We always welcome comments from the public to us individually. We'll stick around afterwards and have conversations. You can email us. You can also come to the next regular council meeting on May 13th and make those public comments. But again, the purpose of the meeting here tonight is for us to discuss, and particularly, the events of the last summer, comments, concerns expressed by citizens, and the work that our law enforcement department has been doing. We look forward to that presentation. Any questions, comments from council members? Finally, I will just welcome members of the police citizens of Irish Council who are with us. Again, Ms. Lynn Hundley, from the Lightfoot Law Group, Mayor Battle. I will turn the time over to you, and you can go ahead and introduce the presentation for the evening.
Thank you, Madam President, and to the council. Thank you for having this session. This session is about how we do things better. This session is about our, the actions that happened on June 1st and June 3rd, to give some clarity to what happened. And also to talk about reforms, and reforms that we have been producing over the last 10, 15 years with our police force. When you look at our police force, it has been very, very much on the forefront of doing reforms. And tonight, Mr. Hamilton will be doing the presentation. Mr. Hamilton is our city administrator. Police fire, et cetera, falls under him. He has everything on the day-to-day services, and Mr. Davis has everything on the build side. And Mr. Hamilton will have a presentation for us, and then afterwards, questions and statements. So I turn the floor over to Mr. Hamilton, thank you.
Good evening, council members. John Hamilton, city administrator. As the mayor stated, in my role, I spend a lot of time, every day, every week, engaged with a number of departments, HPD being probably chief among them, just because of its size and scope and scale. You know, as, throughout this process, and then certainly in the last week, since we received the report, the mayor asked that I come in and kind of use that oversight, that overview role to look not only at the report, but also then engage with leadership within HPD, and the legal team, and others to kind of provide an assessment. And tonight's session is, surely my presentation is not intended to be an all exhaustive, point-by-point review of every single thing in the report. We would be here for many, many hours attempting to do that, and that's certainly not what the intent is here today. What I do intend to do, though, is highlight a few things. There are some places where we have some concerns with the report. There's some things that we do feel like there's another view that needs to be taken, and I'll highlight some of those things. But much, much more importantly, there are lessons learned, there are recommendations that we absolutely want to address and talk about really where we go forward. And I think maybe even more important than that aspect specific to the CAC report is flowing that into what really, what about the bigger picture of policing? Because the reality is managing special events and protests are one category of special events that our police department and other departments are heavily involved in managing. That is a distinct minority of the work that the police department does for our community. That is not representative of really the scope and scale of their work. And quite frankly, as we've spent the last year, obviously, hearing a lot of comments, questions, concerns from citizens, and in a lot of dialogue with citizens, it's pretty rare that those meaningful conversations are actually about protest management. There's certainly been concerns expressed, and so don't want to sidestep that. But the reality is, most of the input and things that we've received has been on policing things that have absolutely nothing to do with protest. And so I take that as a signal that that's really where the community is more focused than just on looking back at one singular event, or two singular events within a 48-hour period. So we'll attempt to do that and take that broader brush approach to other aspects of modernizing policing, which is a constant ongoing thing. But we do think it's important to address certain aspects of the CAC's report. And, you know, I want to start with some of the bigger issues. And I take probably, I believe, the biggest issue that was addressed and discussed in the report is the issue of transparency. And there are certainly some aspects of what was described that we disagree with, and I'll lay that out for you, and other pieces that we acknowledge, some of the conditions of what occurred and how we got there. But I want to address those things. And I want to start with the issue of training records. So in the report, in simple terms, the report stated that the city did not turn over, would not turn over the training records. And that's not a quote, that's certainly just characterizing the message that was delivered. And from our position, that is not an accurate assessment of what happened. And I'll explain to you why I say that, because the request for records was not denied. Now, at the beginning of the process, as the legal team came in to assist the CAC, began their assessment, they delivered to the city a document listing 20 different pieces of information, documents or other things that they requested. Three of those 20 were specific to training kind of issues. One of them was a list of instructors relevant to this type of event, and that list of instructors was provided to them. Another was a list and representations of the training. It's mostly, mostly in terms of the documents delivers, mostly PowerPoint slide kind of content curriculum, and that was delivered to them. The third thing was the request for records of the individual officers. And the response from legal department, where they delivered those documents, and it was about 1,800 pages of documents in total for the entire responsiveness to that request, as well as some thumb drives and things like that. Included in that was a cover letter explaining, you know, how we're responding to each one of those. Specifically, on the item related to the training, what the legal department notified him is that delivering that would be a significant effort, far beyond, probably more unreasonable to what they're really trying to accomplish, and that they should set up a time to come actually sit down and review the records on site. Now, they needed to be reviewed electronically, and I'll explain why that is. Because they are substantial. I'll give you an example here in a second. But then in January 22nd, we received back, the legal department received back response from the Lightfoot team in response to the September 24th document dump. And it was one aspect, not one of the training-related things. Another aspect of the list of 20, that they had some specific questions or concerns about. Nowhere in that document did they address a question or concern about having not received the training records, nor did they seek to set up a time to come review all of those training records. Then also, subsequent to that, there was another request for information. Our legal department responded back by email with some attached documents. And in that email, and I have it here, specifically said, "If you need any additional information, please let us know." Reading that directly from the email that they received. And there was no additional request. So why is reviewing the training records such a significant task? And I've got a physical visual here for you. This is approximately 400 pages. It's one training record for one fairly junior officer, about five years on the force. This is one training record for one officer with over 20 years on the force. Obviously, we've got a lot of folks about five years, and a lot of folks over 20, a lot of people in between. Their request would have been somewhere north of 30,000 pages of documents that are currently stored electronically. Now, our expectation is that a very, very, very small percentage of that, they would have found relevant to their review. They obviously had to put in a great deal of effort just to review the 1,800 pages that was delivered to them, and the over 400 hours of camera footage, both body cam and drone and other things. The expectation that we could print 30-something thousand pages of documents, and they would have the ability to review those efficiently and effectively and find what was relevant, is just not, in our opinion, reasonable. And that's why they were offered the opportunity to come here and review those in their current form, which is electronic, more efficient way to do that. Now, I think it's very unfortunate that they ultimately did not have a review of those documents. Because when you've got an officer with over 1,200 pages of a training record, what that tells you is he's a really well-trained officer. And he is probably, in terms of the training, he has very average, normal in our department. We have an exceptionally well-trained department. We have exceptionally well-trained officers. And yes, those 30-something thousand pages of documents would have demonstrated that. So that's certainly, I think, as you look at the nature of the report, I think would have reflected favorably on the department. But in terms of the review that they were asked to do, the resources that have been and would have needed to be invested in doing that, the approach that we asked for, or recommended to them, we believe would have been a better approach, right? But we can't go back and change all that. I think it is important, and there's a number of times here tonight where we will talk specifically about training. Training is exceptionally important. Our officers need it, they need more of it. There's a recommendation about training, and we'll hit on some of those recommendations. I think you will be hard-pressed to find anybody in any police department anywhere, to include ours, who would say, "No, we got plenty of training, we don't need anymore. We're always looking for more training." And so we take to heart the recommendations that are in there. And again, I will address some of those more specifically as we get to some of the aspects of where there's questions about training. But I want to make it clear that our legal department did not deny, did not refuse to provide training records. And there are certainly some folks I've seen in dialogue that have taken that interpretation from the report, and that is not an accurate interpretation. The second issue, far more complex, and I'm certainly not a lawyer. In fact, we've made a conscious decision to not try and do a bunch of legalese on addressing the issue of compelling officers to testify. I think it's more effective to kind of keep it in layman's terms, and it's certainly something that if we need at some point to drill deeper into all of the constitutionality questions and legal aspects, and we could certainly have a lawyer do that. But I want to just talk briefly about what the issue was there. So we had two opposing legal opinions, which is actually very common when you get two lawyers together. Their opinions are almost always in conflict with each other, in my experience. And that's not to denigrate either one of them, or to, you know, to try and determine who was right or who was wrong. But as is common, we had one legal team that brought one, their legal opinion around the issue of Garrity, which is shorthand for a decision made by the Supreme Court relative to compelling public employees, and specifically, police officers, to testify. We're all very knowledgeable around our right to not testify against ourselves, you know? If you ever get arrested, you're going to get read your rights, which should make clear to you that you have no obligation to testify against yourself. And so it's kind of that constitutional issue, in simple terms, that Garrity tries to address. Because there is always a greater good, even if the information you get cannot be used to deal with a criminal situation, there's always a greater good to be served by getting at the truth, particularly in law enforcement work, because we can use that to improve policy, to improve equipment, to improve training, and do a number of administrative things that are important for the leadership, for the chain of command, and disciplining the force. And Garrity serves and gives the chief, in the context of that disciplinary, administrative disciplinary system, to compel officers to testify, even when it's essentially against themselves. Because it gives us the greatest chance of getting at the truth and solving problems going forward, preventing things from happening again. So one legal team believed that if we compelled the officers to speak to the CAC, that they would enjoy the protections offered by Garrity. The city's legal team disagreed with that legal opinion, and they offered the opinion that they in fact would not be protected as intended under Garrity. Now, ultimately, legal opinions are just that, they're opinions. We could have gotten a third set of lawyers, and they may come up with a third opinion on the subject. Ultimately, what matters in those kind of cases is when the issue is taken before a judge, and there's a judicial ruling on those kinds of things. Now, even that's not final, because judges' decisions can be appealed, and they can be appealed all the way to the US Supreme Court. And I don't think, and I'm confident, that it's none of our intent to take this sort of issue all the way to the Supreme Court just to affect this review. Because quite frankly, there is still more work to be done that will get at the real administrative authorities and disciplinary issues that result from this. And I talked about that a little bit more. But I will say that there's actually been fairly recent precedent here within the state of Alabama on this issue. And our legal team also relied on some of those recent, or that recent ruling to inform their opinion. Now, a judge might have decided they were wrong, but we weren't at the point of taking this issue to a judge. So because they were not, they wouldn't be able to come to an agreement over this Garrity issue, the agreement was made that the Lightfoot team, on behalf of the CAC, would provide us a list of the officers they wanted to speak to. So they were not looking to speak to every single officer out there. They gave us a specific list of officers, and those officers were notified that the CAC wished to speak to them. They were absolutely made available, and they were notified, but it would be voluntary, okay? And I acknowledge that. It was voluntary. So the correct characterization here is the city would not compel the officers to speak, but the officers were made available, the officers were not barred from speaking. They were notified of that, and it is absolutely true that none of those officers chose to speak. That's very unfortunate, because we do want this report to be more robust and have more detail in it than what ultimately it was able to have. So, but the characterization that the city or the department would not make them available was not an accurate characterization. And I will say, the issue came up multiple times in the report, and was not always characterized that way. You know, so there's some places where it referred to the city not compelling them, which is accurate. And in other places where it made it sound like the city actually prevented them from speaking or barred them from doing so, and that would not be accurate, so. The other issue that came up, obviously, the various types of irritants and tools and munitions that were used by law enforcement agencies on the scene has been an issue discussed quite a bit, and specifically, rubber bullets. So, you know, we've seen the pictures, I think everybody's seen the pictures. They've been displayed publicly here in this chamber and other places where there were some people that were hit with what we refer to as rubber bullets, right? And that's part of the issue, is how, you know, how people define different things. So the things that people have been talking about, have been talking about from the very beginning, the pictures you saw, are the types of munitions, while not intended to penetrate, not intended to cause the types of injuries they did, is what we refer to as rubber bullets, and those are munitions that HPD does not have, right? Now, one of the things that the CAC found, as in reviewing some of the body cam footage, was we did have an officer who commented at one place that he had fired five T and E rounds. Now, based on that, we know what he was talking about. It was not the same kind of munitions that we refer to from the pictures and things, not the kind that we would refer to as rubber bullets. While they are made of rubber, it's a very different shape, very different weight, has a different purpose, is utilized differently. But, and all we know is what he said. So, I mean, you know, we've got to assume that when he said, "I fired five of these things," that he was telling the truth, right? Now, as was noted in the report and discussed last Thursday night, that officer is not with HPD anymore. He is no longer an officer here in HPD. But if in fact he did fire those rounds, he was out of policy, and absolutely would be facing disciplinary action because of that. So, but what we want to make clear is, you know, where we have said, we had said previously, "We don't have those rubber bullets, we don't use those rubber bullets," that is absolutely a true statement. The type of round that he used was very different than what we've seen in the pictures. And so certainly, if council wants to see those, I can get those and show you an example of that. They are the ones that we do have, only authorized for use by SWAT, under a very different kind of scenario than what was out there. That's why I say he wasn't authorized to do it. One is, he was not a member of the SWAT team. He had been previously, but was not on the SWAT team that night. There was not ammunition that was issued. He had actually had those on his person separately, and absolutely was not authorized to use those. So, fully acknowledged. And I think, you know, the lesson learned out of that specifically, and was addressed in here, and fully agree, is taking a much deeper look at how those specialized teams, how they store, how they issue, how they pull back from the officers, some of those specialized munitions. Because the issue that you've got, and is not only with the IRT, which was the team that was involved in the protests, but also our SWAT team, not deployed as a SWAT team that night, but they deal with a wide variety of circumstances. And so there are some scenarios where certain kinds of munitions are appropriate, and there's other kinds of scenarios where they are absolutely not appropriate. And this is an example where they were not issued that munition, they were not authorized to use that munition. And so that is absolutely an issue that's got to be looked at, and we will be looking at that. So, you know, the beanbag round is what was issued. In fact, that's what he kind of said in his statement, that his first five were this T and E round, and then beanbags after that, which the beanbags is what he was supposed to be using. And those are intended, not for moving the crowd, those are not intended to just disperse people. They're actually intended to be, you know, point munition for someone who is taking a particular action, taking a particular behavior, is how those should be used. And that rubber fin stabilized round that we're talking about, and beanbags, have a very similar impact to the person, as long as they're employed correctly. But let's talk about irritants. And it's an area where, you know, there was an example in the report that made reference to how, you know, one particular portion of the event, how irritants were used. And it was described in a negative way, as if they shouldn't have been. And in fact, it's actually a great example of exactly why we use irritants, and exactly how they should be used. And what I'm talking about, so the irritants that were used that night was CS gas. I know a lot of people refer to that as tear gas, and I understand why they do, but that is not what is actually known as tear gas. And then also OC spray, which our officers have, and is used in a couple of different forms. But the reason irritants were deployed, fairly deep into the scenario, so there was multiple steps of escalation before the irritants were deployed, the whole purpose is to keep distance between officers and protesters. So we've all seen videos of protests in other cities where the officers and the protesters are chest to chest. And that offers you the greatest opportunity for people to get injured, offers you the greatest opportunity for the only alternative an officer thinks he has is a building club. Offers great opportunity for people to get tripped and trampled. And also offers the greatest opportunity for a protester to, in the heat of the moment, in the emotion of the moment, do something that equals a felony. And as Chief had stated, and his intent to, his leadership was stated at the joint planning sessions before the event with other agencies, we weren't there to arrest folks. When it came time to disperse, the point was to disperse folks. Could, you know, could they have arrested hundreds and hundreds of people? Absolutely, they could have, but that wasn't the intent, that's not why they were there. When it came time to disperse, all of their actions were designed to disperse the crowd. And the irritants are one of the ways in which you communicate to people, and then ultimately convince them that they need to leave, okay? And so if you look at, you go back and look at how things escalated, and at this point, I'm talking specifically June 3rd, because June 1st and June 3rd were actually very different scenarios. And so there's a couple of the places where I think it's important to note the difference between those two events. On June 3rd, which was much more pre-planned, much more pre-coordinated, amongst the various agencies who were there, more resources positioned in case they were needed. You know, it started with the bullhorn commands, "This is an unlawful assembly, he must depart." And then slowly, the presence was ramped up. IRT was moved out of the garage and onto the street where they were visible, still probably 30, 40 feet away from the protesters, and stayed in that posture for quite some time. Aleah drove through as they came into town. Then ultimately, IRT puts on their gas mask, and then begins slowly moving forward. Each of those were separated by several minutes. All of those included lots of verbal commands over bullhorns and LRAD to let people know they needed to leave. And one of the things that's very interesting to see is it worked far better than I think a lot of folks realize. If you look at and follow the drone footage all the way through that time period, over that about, you know, 45-minute period to an hour, each time they took a little step up in the process, part of the crowd bled away. So crowds started at somewhere around 1,500 folks or so. And each time there was that little step up, some number of people went away. They got the message. I actually talked to somebody who was there and said, "I got the message." And I left, long before any of the irritants or anything came. And so by the time the irritants were being deployed, the crowd was actually much, much smaller. And it was clear that those were folks that at that point in time were communicating in a number of ways, had no intention of leaving, okay? Now, I understand that people don't like it, the irritants. That night, I was there the whole time, walking through the crowd. I got CS gas multiple times, I got OC multiple times, I understand exactly how it feels. The point, the point is, it's uncomfortable, get out of here. And the point is, use it to keep space between the officers and the protesters. And that's exactly what it did. As the officers began at the point of actually moving forward and continued to push irritants, they actually maintained quite a bit of space between the officers and protesters. Now, I understand that there's still people getting injured. But my expectation is, and of course, we never, we'll never know, because it didn't happen, had officers needed to go lay hands on that crowd, or felt the need to do that, or even just get up there and start pushing, then my expectation is there would have been a lot more injuries. And there likely would have been people do things where the officers would have had almost no choice but to arrest them, okay? Now, we did get down to a point at the very end where about 20, 22 folks or so did get arrested. And I was there to watch that entire scenario as well. I recognize I had the advantage of having watched a lot of this camera footage, but I also was an eyewitness, walking in the crowd, walking in the crowd. walking in the crowd, walking with the police, observing all of these activities, to include the final little group of people that insisted on getting arrested and stood and watched the entire thing as they were told repeatedly to leave, told repeatedly they were going to be arrested if they didn't. Portions of that crowd got the message and left. Portions of that crowd, when the police began advancing, took off running and they weren't chased. Because the point was, as Chief told everybody on his team, the whole point is not to arrest people. The whole point is to have them go home. And so everybody that chose to do that was not arrested. It was a pretty small group of people. But that slow escalation is a great example of exactly how you communicate that message. Some of it obviously is verbal, but also the physical actions of the law enforcement team communicated very clearly what their expectations were. And you can see examples where protesters who now say they had no idea they're supposed to leave, they're actually caught on body cams saying, "We know you want us to leave." In fact, one of the convictions in court, that's specifically what, how the prosecutor presented evidence where he said, "I didn't know I was supposed to leave until she showed the body cam where he said, 'I know you want me to leave.'" So, you know, the idea that the crowd had no idea what the expectations were is not, not an accurate assessment. But we can always look for better ways and more ways to communicate. And so we take that recommendation to heart and absolutely are looking at more and more tools and how can we do that effectively? So, while, while our assessment is, and my own observation out there, was that there was a lot of communication. You can always do it better. We should never be in a place to think that I were good enough. We always need to think we got to get better. And so that's really how we take this aspect of the report. Another, another issue. Another issue that is really more in much of the public dialogue that has occurred, even more than it is, you know, in the report, is the issue of peaceful. We've heard a thousand times here, it's a peaceful protest. Now, we probably could have a really long, robust debate around the definition of peaceful. And, you know, in this context, you are not only evaluating certain individuals, you're also evaluating the crowd. The crowd takes on a personality of its own. You know, a team takes on a personality that is an aggregation of everybody there and is not necessarily a reflection of one individual. You know, Mr. Keek was a football player. How many times did the coach talk about the team and how the team behaves? And you saw a team take on a different personality when a certain player came on the field or left the field. That's the exact same thing that happens in a big crowd in a protest. Same thing that happens in a crowd at a concert. Doesn't have to be a negative context. And, you know, whoever came up with the term mob mentality, they didn't just make it up. Right? In fact, it's an important part of the training that Homeland Security and the standards that they establish and the way in which we're trained. In fact, the incident commander that night, we talk about the training of the team that was there. The incident commander, both on the June 1st, and he actually was an instructor for Homeland Security at the school down at Anniston, right? I'm not sure that we could find anybody in the state of Alabama with more knowledge about how to do these things. And certainly, his leadership, his knowledge played heavily into how our IRT has been trained for quite some time. But ultimately, none of us would classify as peaceful. Now, was the entire crowd paired in case things turned not lawful? And the reality is those resources that we had positioned were never needed or never called on. And our community proved to us that night and dozens of times throughout the summer of 2020 and into the fall that we have the ability to conduct protests of multiple natures of varying size, and we can do it lawfully. And everybody's rights can be preserved, both those who wish to protest as well as those who just want to use a sidewalk to get to a restaurant downtown. And so I would, I think we need to commend our community for, despite as ugly as we may believe June 1st or June 3rd was, there's been lots of opportunities to do it different, and we've availed ourselves of that opportunity as a community and done extremely well. But it's important to note in the context of what decisions were made and how and when they were made, that it wasn't based on peacefulness. Okay? Now, there's also been much talk about intelligence and in some cases referred to as actionable intelligence. Quite frankly, while there's a lot of, a lot of discussion in the, in the report, there was also, there's already been a lot of discussion here in these chambers and other places on the part of law enforcement and others. And reviewing, going back and reflecting on all those conversations, those presentations, reflecting on the way it's characterized in the CAC report, I would say we're, we're really, we spent a lot more time on it than we probably should have in the context of reviewing the decisions that were made. But let's talk about, you know, what, what occurred. So first off, people are familiar, they've heard a lot about the NAAMAC. So the NAAMAC is an organization. It's a, you know, it's a physical location. It's a large batch of technology. It's certain people with certain training, but most importantly, it's a partnership amongst multiple agencies that HPD hosts. HPD got it started, but other, a lot of other agencies have joined in. And its primary purpose is crime. 99% of the work they do is in support of CID solving crime, using electronic technology to capture evidence and exploit that evidence, using cameras, both in crime prevention, but also in crime solving. And that's what they do every day, day in and day out, and have had a profound impact on the manner which HPD provides public safety into our community. Council members, we have on, for very specific areas of town, have spent a lot of time working directly with some of you in your districts on work that they do to help us in that crime solving function. But they also do some intel gathering and some intel analysis, and we're certainly capturing feeds of information coming in relative to the activities, really particularly leading up to June 3rd, less so on June 1st. There was a lot more chatter, a lot more discussion, a lot more threatening communications that were seen relative to June 3rd than June 1st. And so that's primarily where you saw that. But we've seen people refer to it as actionable intelligence. And I can't find an example of any decisions that any of the senior leadership made in the, in the middle of the scenario or relative to, you know, specific tactical decisions that you could say was based on actionable intelligence. So what is actionable intelligence? You know, if, in simple terms, and I did spend time in the military, I was not an intelligence officer, but was a customer of a great deal of intelligence. And this is absolutely not a military context, so there's similarities, right? So I think it's important, you know, I certainly have the, because of my experience, the ability to lean back on things that I saw in terms of leadership or these kinds of operations that I can, I can reflect back on my experience in the military. But it's important that we note that it's different. This is law enforcement on US soil. So there are some similarities, but there are also a lot of differences, and I think that's important to know. We've had citizens talk about, law enforcement is not the military. But, you know, when we say intelligence, most people immediately think of whatever war movie they've seen or, you know, a DOD kind of context and reflect on that. And there are times when, in that scenario, you have such profound intelligence and you've been able to corroborate it so effectively that a commander might launch a military operation based on that intelligence. His staff has analyzed it to a point where he's been able to convert assumptions into facts. And he's confident enough, not 100%, but competent enough to make that kind of decision and launch some sort of capability. So now let's get away from the military, because that's not where we are, and talk about law enforcement. The only decision that Chief McMurray made based on intelligence was to be prepared. Now, I understand that you've seen information, you've seen presentations, lots of discussion where it doesn't seem that way. And I understand why people were confused, right? So I don't say that to criticize people, but the reality is all of the things that were done leading up to the event, leading up to the beginning of the permitted special event, was positioning assets to be ready. So let me give you an example. There was a good bit of intelligence about people were going to bring weapons. Now, it never rose to a level where Chief McMurray had so much confidence in that intel that he actually took direct action based on that. Direct action would have been position officers at every entry point and frisk every single person looking for weapons. That never occurred. He told officers to be prepared, look for. Based on that, he positioned undercover officers within the crowd to look for weapons, and in fact, they found some. That intelligence turned out to be accurate. There were people that showed up to the protest illegally with guns. And every time action was taken, it was not based on, hey, remember a social media post from three days ago? The action that was taken was a police officer with eyes on the weapon, with eyes on the person, and that person was detained and the weapon was removed from the situation. Had, based on the feeds that were coming in, there was a lot of threatening material that came in. And as the report notes, the department did a lot of work to try to confirm or deny whether or not that stuff was true. And in a number of cases, very significant pieces of information, they were not able to confirm that it really happened. Now, not confirming doesn't mean it didn't happen. It just means they could not confirm it, and it didn't rise to a level where it was so significant that Chief took, would have taken the ultimate action. Had, had he had the kind of actionable intelligence that people think he had and that, that some people believe he interpreted as such, we would have just shut the whole event down. It just never would have occurred. That would have been responding to, reacting to actionable intelligence. But in fact, that's not what happened. The event went on. In fact, NAACP who had a permit executed their event exactly as the permit was outlined, exactly the way their chapter president had negotiated with HPD to do it, and it went off wonderfully, exactly as intended. No criticism to how their event occurred. Most everything that has been reviewed here and addressed and the concerns people had is what came after that. And every one of those decisions, the decision to declare it unlawful, the decision to deploy IRT, the decision to deploy smoke, the decision to deploy irritants, all the way at the end, the decision to arrest people who refused to get out of the road, all those were decisions based on what was happening right in front of their eyes. There was no reflection back on some social media post or some piece of intel or some piece of, you know, some piece of gossip that said, "Hey, let's deploy irritants now." It was based on the behavior of the protesters directly in front of their eyes. So gathering as much information as you can, analyzing it as best as you can, confirming or denying its accuracy is all great work that our team does. But at the end of the day, the decisions that were made on that night was based on what was actually happening in front of them. And there were a number of examples of pieces of intel that came in that before the event could not be corroborated, but during the event proved to be accurate. To include some people being here from other places in the country that have, based on their criminal record and based on their ongoing court cases, have availed themselves of this kind of event and availed themselves of being arrested in other parts of the country as well. While it certainly was dispersed and shut down before it got to a level of violence that many people were concerned about, there were a number of pieces of information that the department relied on to justify pre-positioning assets that turned out to be true during the event. And I will tell you, there were assets pre-positioned that were never called on because the nature of the event, the behavior of the crowd, never justified those additional assets. Now, let's get at, you know, kind of hit you a little bit there on communications and specifically with, on June 3rd with NAACP. There's a number of things that went very poorly on multiple different organizations' part in terms of making sure people understood what their intent was for their event. I'll tell you that there was miscommunication inside the leadership team of NAACP. And my guess is, as a professional organization, I learned from that. And certainly as they look to organize future events, they'll do it differently. Just as we look at our pieces of it and look to do things differently. I'll tell you, this was also somewhat of a unique situation. The, because of the request and the communication and negotiation with NAACP, one of the things that added complexity here was that we gave them exceptional policy and allowed them to plan their event and get a permit well inside the typical deadline. So typically, you've got to have a permit 20 days out. They got their permit about a day or so before. Okay? Which obviously makes it complex for them, makes it complex for us. It makes it that much more challenging for the public who might want to attend to get accurate information of what, of what to expect when they got there. We totally understand that there was confusion over whether or not there was a march afterwards or not. And part of the challenge was, and this goes at some of the confusion and miscommunication inside of NAACP, there were some leaders there that understood exactly what the permit was, and it was in accordance with their request. And there were other leaders that did not realize that and thought that there were other things. And so, don't say that to fault anybody. It's just a miscommunication in the heat of a very short timeline. Additionally, there was a misinformation campaign. We, you know, we talk about some of the intel, some of the social media things we saw were people describing an event very, very different than what the NAACP had planned. In fact, there was one example where someone took their, the NAACP's electronic flyer and slightly altered some things on it. If you didn't look closely, you assumed you were looking at a flyer from the NAACP, and in fact, you were looking at an altered flyer that added, contributed to some confusion. So there was a, there was some misinformation going on that we absolutely realized portions of the crowd had been exposed to and didn't realize it was misinformation. So there was a lot of confusion, there was a lot of confusion that night on a lot of people's part. Now, for us, what do we need to internalize and what do we need to look at is what's our role and how can we as a government entity help ensure the public is better informed about a private event? That's one of the things we need to remember, is this was a private event. When you come get a permit for your organization, it's a private event. It's your event. And the department's necessary supports you in accordance with that permit, but ultimately, it's your event. And so I've had people say, "Well, you know, the city should have been putting out information about their event." And as we look at systems and as we look at ways in which we can do this different in the future, we will certainly contemplate how we can do that. But there's a legal question to be addressed there in terms of how we as a government entity use government public systems to put out information, which some people may interpret it as advocacy and advertising for a private event. And here's why it matters. While the NAACP's event was well-intended and went off great, you know, I think most of us would have no problem if we, the city, had made sure everybody knew when their event, where it was, and when it started and when it ended and things. But had an organization with an opposing view come and gotten a special event permit for a counter protest, would you be okay with me advertising their event as well? My guess is, we've seen some of those kind of protests in places around the country. My guess is we wouldn't be okay with the city government appearing to advocate for some of those kind of events, right? So we need to be very careful because if I do for one, I must do for the other. Now, that doesn't mean we can't play a role, and so I'm not pushing it aside. I think it's an important issue, but it's not as simple as saying, "Hey, next time, city advertise that event better." So there are complexities, legal complexities and otherwise, that we'll need to consider. But I take on the task with the team, with the legal team, with the communications team, with HPD and the other departments involved, especially events, to look at this issue and see what can be done differently. Now, a simple thing would be, well, let's just put the special event permit out on the website. It's a public document. Just hang every single special event permit out there. And that's great, but that wouldn't have made one bit of difference on June 3rd. If you got a text message from your friend saying, "Hey, here's what we're doing tonight", you're not going to say, "Well, let me go look at the city website just to make sure there really is a permit for this thing." You know, hanging those kind of things on our website is a very, very passive form of communication. And any expectation that somehow or another that would have solved the problem is just, I think, naive. That doesn't mean we can't do it, but this issue is far more complex than something as simple as that. And so we will take on that issue. I don't expect to have an answer overnight, but we will absolutely explore what are ways in which we can, can better communicate or assist those organizations in accurately communicating the intent of their, of their event. And I want to go back and touch on training, talked about it a little bit. And as I said before, you'll never hear me say, "We don't need any more training in HPD." Now, I will say, as an aside, you know, we're getting into budget cycle here soon, and we certainly are going to be coming to you in this budget with specific programs and things that we want to make sure that we can execute in the police department and others that are a reflection of the growth of our community. So there certainly is growing costs of all of the services that we provide in law enforcement, it's no different. But when we talk about increasing training, so for example, we mandate greater training on certain things than the state requires. Those are man hours. So if we say, "Hey, we want every officer in the force to get eight hours of training on X", that's eight hours that I pull him off the street to go to training. And that may be a wonderful thing and an important thing, but those eight hours that he's in training, there has to be another officer out there making sure- there has to be another officer out there making sure your neighborhoods are properly patrolled and properly secured. And so there's a cost associated with that. That's not to say that it's not an appropriate cost, but we have to be cognizant of what it takes to actually execute training. Because we are currently executing a great deal of training across our force. And when they're doing that, they're not on the street preventing crime or solving crime and those kinds of things. So there's a cost of doing business, it's an important cost. But as we look at what is the, the training that we require, either routine training for all of our officers or specialized training like the IRT, we do need to be cognizant of those costs. But I guarantee you, the chief could easily come up with a long list of additional training he would love to do. And those are all things that he's working hard on identifying the opportunity to do it. But also, we've got to do it in the context of when and how we do it. And I'm going to get into a little bit more about some of the training and the investments that are already going on to improve. But I do also want to address, in the report, there was a comment that is not quoted in the report, but it's, it's referred to where an officer said or implied that they didn't feel like they were properly trained. And that's one, one of the things that happens going forward out of this is now that, now that their review is complete, all of, all of that body cam footage and stuff is now back under control of IA and they will now begin their normal process of reviewing every single thing. So every single thing in the report where, where they identified a concern, so there's examples where they see, hey, we saw this and it appeared to not be in compliance. Or some where they absolutely believe it's not in compliance. Those and every other aspect of it will get reviewed. And so the comment about the training is one that they've already started looking at. And, you know, it's our belief that that comment was kind of taken out of context. But regardless, the, the need for more training, particularly the joint training is something that Chief and the sheriff have both already started addressing. In fact, there's training going on right now this week with the IRT. There's already been additional joint training between some of their forces and ours, and there'll be more to come. And so, we'll continue to work on those things, but I will tell you that, that our teams have, prior to this and since this, continued to get very, very robust training. But again, that's not to set aside the recommendation. A recommendation to look at any weaknesses in your training program, look for any holes in your training program, looking for opportunities to expand that and particularly, looking for opportunities to train across agencies or across teams within your department is an important recommendation and one that we absolutely agree with. And then finally, inter-agency coordination. This is one where I want to talk a little bit about the difference between June 1st and June 3rd. And there was quite a few differences. The size of the crowd was different. The actual, the, the, the location of where the special event, the permitted special event ended was different for both of them. And ultimately, the, the protesters that remained after the special event, where they focused physically and where, where as a, as kind of a, a, a body, as a crowd, put pressure was very different. So on June 1st, the crowd was actually focused on the courthouse. And in fact, portions of the crowd actually came up the stairs. There was a place, a point at which they, they pushed through the barricades that the sheriff's department had there. And I want to make it clear, the sheriff's department is responsible for security of the courthouse and that's the way they were positioned. There was a point at which, and I was down there on the square, actually with the chief watching it, when the sheriff made the determination that he did not have sufficient resources up on the courthouse. If, if the crowd chose to continue to proceed beyond the barricades and continue to proceed up onto the courthouse itself, he didn't feel like he had sufficient forces to deal with that. And asked that HPD send, you know, he talks, he was chief and asked that he send forces up there, send some personnel to augment him up on the courthouse. And that's exactly what we did. And I say we because after they went up there, I went up there with them and stood and watched the proceedings from up on the, that upper level of the courthouse. And I say that only to give a reflection of the perspective that I had of watching that in addition to going back and watching various videos, both from drones and body cam on things that were occurring there. But what's particularly important to note there is this, this, you know, inter-agency participation cooperation, who was in charge? So one is, and I'll briefly reflect back on military experience. If as a commander, I was given a responsibility for a particular piece of terrain, and that is not how it is in the state of Alabama. Every square inch of Huntsville that's in Madison County is in Madison County. So the sheriff's jurisdiction is every square inch of Madison County. Even those portions that are captured inside the city limits of Huntsville or the city limits of Trianna or Madison. And so his jurisdiction is layered on top of Chief McMurray's jurisdiction. And oh, by the way, all of Madison County is inside the state of Alabama. So the state agencies, the law enforcement agencies that arrived, their jurisdiction fully overlaps the sheriff's jurisdiction. And of course, then you can make the same for federal agencies in terms of where their jurisdiction is. Now, law enforcement agencies routinely support each other, routinely operate adjacent to each other and generally speaking, kind of divide up different duties. So there's a lot of things that the sheriff will have his deputies conducting law enforcement tasks out in unincorporated Madison County that they don't do in the city because the police department has it covered. That doesn't mean that they don't have the authority to do it. It just means they focus their efforts, their forces, their man-hours predominantly out in the unincorporated part of the county and rely on the city, the municipal police departments to manage law enforcement inside the city. But I've, I've talked to some citizens and there's some parts in the report where there, there's discussion about confusion over who was in charge. Chief McMurray went and positioned himself up on the courthouse adjacent to the sheriff as the sheriff was declaring it an unlawful assembly. And as he was beginning to identify the things he needed to do to move the crowd off of the courthouse, he and the chief were standing side by side. So that court found a place where one line of officers didn't go where they intended to and literally within 15, was far less challenging on the first. Now, the issue on the first is everybody was much less prepared. There had been much less of the intel feed. There had been less time from a very law, the 30th, we had a protest conducted lawfully. It wasn't very big, our protesters came up and the police very successfully segregated the two groups and gave them kind of their separate, so the event kicking off that afternoon. And each agency had got up and spoke about where they were, what resources they had and things. And during the event, and some of this is discussed in the CSC report, there were resources that some agencies brought to the event that were not identified in that pre-brief. That's an issue. Everybody needs to talk about, you know, what, what are their procedures? What are the resources they're bringing and those kinds of things? And so there should have been a much better level of detail in terms of, in, in that pre-brief so that everybody understood the resources that were, were going to be out there in the area. So absolutely, there's lessons to be learned there. There are also examples during the event where, where agencies position themselves in response to the crowd and it's not really the way it was planned to do. And so those are all things that have got to get addressed in joint training. Those are all things that have to get addressed in joint leadership sessions working through. And, and quite frankly, while the sheriff's department and HPD and other police departments oftentimes are augmenting each other in much more routine law enforcement operations, this is a much less common event and, and deserves the attention to make certain that everybody understands exactly what their policies and procedures are and understand how they will conduct themselves in these kinds of events where really, it was two organizations operating adjacent to each other as opposed to commingled. And there's certainly some places towards the end of the event where you saw sheriff and police teams that got commingled and that can add to confusion if you haven't trained properly. So we take away from both of those events, some disparate lessons learned. Both of them offered things that need to be done to strengthen the teamwork between agencies. And both of them are things that the, the chief and the sheriff have already begun working on, but still much work to be done to ensure that we've properly resourced those joint planning sessions, those, and those joint training sessions. Now, there's still a lot of work to be done. So we, we got the report six days ago. We now have teams going back through those 400 hours of, of camera footage. We have, obviously, the report focuses in on some specific concerns that will guide their, their review. But there's still work to be done to continue to do that. And then those things that need to roll over into our administrative process in terms of policy and/or discipline, all of that at work is now ongoing and will continue to go moving forward. So that piece is not done. But as I said at the beginning, I really want to talk now bigger picture. Because as we've said, special events of any sort, whether it's a protest or a party, is really a minority of what our law enforcement agencies are asked to do and on many days may be the least important thing to do. There's a lot of important work that they do and it's in an environment that is extremely complex. It's an environment that requires a lot of resourcing and a lot of training and a lot of professionalism. So when we look at, you know, what is an organization and specifically what is a police department, it's made up of a number of things. The framework of an organization, facilities, policy, people, equipment, training, technology. All of those things together is what equals an organization. Take any one of them away, you don't really have much of an organization. So let's try and address each of those kind of functional areas as we go here. So starting with facilities. And this is, you know, particularly in the realm of training. Effective training of this sort relies heavily on facilities. You need facilities built to do this purpose, built with the correct kind of technology to challenge the officers and provide them a format to actually train effectively. And as we've been saying, very importantly, an opportunity to train jointly with other agencies. And that's exactly what the city council, this administration, and specifically HPD's been doing for several years now. You have invested heavily in our public safety training facilities. A new academy that'll open here in a couple of months for, for both of, both fire and police with a lot of resources they currently don't have access to for both of them. And there are more phases to come, particularly some of the, the very specialized apparatus for fire is, is future phases and things that right now they have to travel to train on. We need to get that right here inside our city. But you've invested significantly in that as well as ranges that offer a great opportunity for, for joint training. Particularly in our case, the, the range was actually a joint effort with the FBI. And so it was a great opportunity for our officers to train with, with federal, federal agencies. But also consolidating CID. You know, when we go back and look at crime statistics and also specifically the clearance rate on crimes, you can see an inflection point when CID was consolidated and able to focus its effort. The synergy around consolidating our investigative teams into a single division was profound. And then the next inflection point was giving them the resources that they have available to them through the NAMAC. The crime rate in our community statistically changed dramatically over those years. And a facility, being able to bring the team together, where they're able to work face to face every single day makes a significant difference in that work. Getting IA into their own building, separated away from the rest of the department so that they are far more accessible to our community. We talk about this a lot, we've talked about it a lot recently about, you know, when citizens have concern, what do they do about it? Well, the best answer is, go to IA. If you've got something that you think was done wrong, go to IA, file a complaint. We had, oftentimes people say, well, you know, we, we know IA's there, but it's sitting right up there next to the chief's office. Not sure I'm comfortable doing that. And I totally understand that and that's why IA now is in their own facility. Completely separate away from the, from HPD headquarters. The only entity in that, in that building is Internal Affairs. And we encourage people to avail them of their services if they think it's warranted. And then other, other facilities that allow us to better employ our officers with IT technology and other technologies that just make them more efficient, more effective and, and really use those tools out there in your neighborhoods protecting the public. Let's talk about policy. So as we know, about a year or so ago, I guess a little bit less than a year, we had three different organizations bring us a list of ideas, recommendations, concerns, questions. In total, between the three, it was 28 things. Now, some of those were somewhat redundant, but you'll recall, we responded to all 28 with what is, you know, what is the answer to that? Now, some of them were things, we're already doing that, it's a great idea, completely agree. Others were, that's a great idea, we're going to start working on that. One of those was, please publish your SOPs. Now, in the, the question that came from the citizens was referred to as SOP. I would say just for, you know, I guess for people's education within law enforcement, referred to it as written directives. So when you hear the chief or somebody talk about written directives, most folks will think of that as a policy letter or an SOP, we're talking the same thing. So HPD has 248 written directives right now. 184 of those are on the website right now, tonight. Would encourage folks to go look at those. And they continue to do, conduct updates and reviews to the others and then, and hang them on the, on the website. Certainly would expect that 248 number to fluctuate as, as we're finding policies that are redundant to each other and consolidate into a single policy or some that may be obsolete and deleted. But also, new technologies, new procedures may come in that would add to that. So you should expect over time, 248 is not the solid number. It changes as we continue to evolve, as we continue to learn and continue to modernize our effort. But having those 184 out there are important. Those, those policies are continuously reviewed through the leadership of the department and they change. Law changes. State and federal regulations change. Best practices from, you know, from national associations change. The Kalia standards, where we're certified, those standards might change. There's changes like that, that HPD was heavily involved in in terms of the number of hours that officers in the state had to be trained on CIT. That's a new change. Not a change for us because we were already doing it, but for other departments, we have to update their policies in accordance with law that was just passed by the legislature. So those sorts of things happen routinely, but also very importantly, our own lessons learned. So when we talk about incident review, oftentimes we are doing lots of reviews of incidents that don't actually represent a violation of policy, but we discover there's a deficiency in our training. Or we discover that while that officer did it in accordance with policy, that's not the way the policy ought to be. Or we find a deficiency in equipment. All of those kinds of lessons learned ultimately change and affect amendments to written directives. And what's important is, if you're curious about what the department trains on, go to the written directives. Written directives guide everything the department does or does not do. It guides everything they train on. It is the policy, the procedure, the nature of what they have to do on a daily basis. So if you've got questions about how the department operates, read the written directives. And, and I want to encourage people to do that. So, you know, we've, you know, pretty much every council meeting for the last year, we've had citizens come and express lots of concerns. And when they are specific, like, like many of them in this book, we can look at that and say, yep, let's go take action on that, let's review that particular idea. But we also get a lot of very ambiguous, essentially say nothing ideas that you can't really do anything with. What I would encourage folks to do, because we've got a lot of citizens that really want to be engaged with how we police our community, read the written directives. If there is something in there that's confusing, ask us about it. Ask the specific question, what does this mean? Why do you do it this way? Or you look at it and you say, I disagree with that. Policy X, paragraph three, it needs to be changed to this. We can sit down and have a very productive conversation around a specific concern, a specific idea. And I would tell you, the written directives and reviewing the specific content in there is a great way to do that. So for all those citizens, and I know there's lots of them, that want to have a productive relationship with the police department, want to have a productive relationship with the HPCAC, want to have an influence in how we operate within the community, the written directives guide everything we do. And so if there's something that you think the department ought to do differently then the written directive associated with that is what has to change, alright? So it provides a great framework for very reasoned, productive conversations around how we conduct law enforcement operations. And so a bit more on training. So first off, again, it is all in accordance with our written directives. Everything that we are doing, everything we train on is what's dictated by those directives. And it's also in accordance with relevant federal and state standards, particularly state. Obviously, the officers are, you know, when you say they're a sworn officer, it's under state authority that they get those, those jurisdictional authorities. But one of the things, and this has been talked about before, we've done presentations previously on some of our hiring and training processes. HPD has its own academy, which affords them the opportunity to actually increase the standards over the minimum. So some examples of that, and there's more than what I'll talk about here, but examples where the state entry exams and, and hiring process and, and exams in their academy may only require 70% to pass, HPD requires an 80%. We think that makes a difference. Up until just the other day, we required double the CIT training hours that the state required. And I'll tell you, the, the state made that change through the lobbying efforts of Mark McMurray. We wouldn't have CIT in Huntsville were it not for his leadership bringing it to us. I'd never heard that before until he walked in my office and started talking about it and put the team together to build it. And the things that have happened in the legislature of late were a direct result of his. Our academy's 18 weeks, state academy's 13 weeks. Those five weeks of addition, you know, that, the southeastern part, so I'm looking at District 2, a lot of growth in that direction, but also District 5, a lot of growth there. of growth there. And those bring unique challenges, the time-space factors matter, so it goes back to the patrol zone issue, but also the core of the city is getting significantly more dense. While, while the core of the city isn't getting geographically bigger, it's getting taller, it's getting a lot more people, and those also bring unique challenges, a lot more special events. And so there's a significant amount of law enforcement resources that need to be available to deal with traffic, deal with special events, deal with the nature of policing in a dense urban core. So bike patrol is an example of, of a capability that needs to be more robust than it currently is. And so we could go on and on and on about, you know, other things that need to happen, but I would tell you that that is the kind of modernization that we must do because it also then, as we grow with our community, it increases our opportunity for officers and citizens to get face to face and get to know each other, understand issues. It allows us to get out of our cars in those places where that's physically possible and do different kind of policing and different kind of community engagement. We can't do that if we haven't resourced the department properly to cover those neighborhoods, particularly those new neighborhoods that right now, if we're completely honest, are not well-covered. Response time in certain areas is not where it needs to be. And so we've got to address those kinds of issues, both within the core of the city as well as out into the areas that, that are around the perimeter of the city. And so, you know, there's lots of different programs. I want to highlight a couple of different things that are critically important, that are representations of the kind of continuous learning, continuous evolution, continuous modernization that our police department is involved in and must be involved in for them to be effective. And it's one that we've already mentioned, the CIT and the mental health officer program. So we started, you know, two or three years ago and quite frankly Huntsville's led the state in this. We have surrounding communities that have also begun investing heavily in it and partnering with us on it. But I would tell you, it's very important that we acknowledge, as we've said before, this is only the beginning. This is a significant issue, has been for a while, and it's a growing issue. We have got to get to a point where 911 calls for altered mental state get responded to by somebody other than a police officer. We're in a place right now where essentially every single one of those calls is getting dispatched to police, whether they want to or not. You know, this is not, you know, the police are not showing up at those because they want to. They're showing up because they're called to and they're dispatched to that and they don't have the latitude to ignore a dispatch. But ultimately, we have got to get professionals in place that are far more suited and are purpose-built to respond to those things. Now, that's not going to solve every issue. We've had some very tragic situations with people who clearly were suffering from mental illness and from drug addiction and their situations ended tragically. In all of those cases, the 911, 911 call that came in is always going to result in police response to that dangerous situation and allegations of commission of crime. So we need to go into this with eyes wide open. You know, getting more CIT officers, getting more mental health officers, getting co-response that we're working towards later this year is not going to suddenly magically solve the issue of someone who's suffering mental illness doing something very dangerous and interacting with their community or with police officers in a dangerous way. That's not going to solve everything, but we know we can really move the needle on this issue. And so I don't want to go into a lot more detail on it only because we're coming back on May 13th, so at the next council meeting, we'll be doing a more detailed presentation on milestones and some things going forward. It certainly will not be a single presentation, it's the beginning. We still are at the beginning of laying in all the plans, laying in the resources and the programs to get there, but modernizing our community's response to mental health issues is extremely important and will weigh heavily on law enforcement as we go forward. And so a very important issue that I want to keep you focused on. And then communication with the public. This is another one of those things, kind of like training. You're never going to hear the police say, hey, we've communicated plenty, we're all good. Never going to hear that. And no matter how much we do, we'll probably always say we want to do more. And quite frankly, technology around the ability to communicate is constantly evolving and so you always have new challenges. Who knows what the next social media app is going to be that pops up tomorrow that suddenly becomes a great way to communicate and a new way to communicate. So we have got to stay on top of that. So let's talk about how we've resourced it. One is we have had for some period of time now, a uniformed officer who was assigned to the office of the chief to serve specifically and solely in the role of public information officer. In fact, just a few years ago, we actually elevated the rank of that position. It's now a lieutenant. We think it is a position where it absolutely needs to have a mature, seasoned, experienced officer, but it's also a great experience for our lieutenants to get as they're assigned to that, as it prepares them for promotion and moving on up into more senior ranks within the department. So an important position. But while there's great value in an experienced officer in a uniform, being able to help inform and engage with the media, that's also not what they were trained to do. They're on a learning curve when they do it. So they bring great value to it, but they also are learning. And so we've recently added a civilian communications specialist position to that team. And so now you have a uniformed officer and a communications-trained civilian partnering together and working specifically on police communications. So that's fairly new. We expect it to grow substantially in its impact. We've already seen over the last, you know, couple of years, significant increase in social media presence, website presence, blog posts and those kind of things that help communicate out of our communications department as well as out of HPD, but we absolutely need more. We need to continue to grow that presence and so that's something that cannot stop. You know, we have remained very active in a number of things like community watch and coffee with the police and ride-along programs and some precincts that run neighborhood-based programs and things. Those are all great things. We need more. We cannot say that laundry list that we have right now is enough. Now, recognize that COVID has impacted some of those programs or some that because of COVID restrictions have, have gone temporarily into hiatus. Hopefully, we're approaching a point where we can start restarting those things, but even getting it all back to where they were before is still not enough. We have got to continue to engage and council, I'd ask you to engage and bring, bring the police into your districts, bring the police into your neighborhoods and help be a catalyst for direct communication with neighborhoods, with citizens between the police. Help, you know, find opportunities for the police to engage and help overcome misunderstandings, help overcome differences and those kinds of things. You can play an important role. And the other piece is, we think the CAC needs to play an extremely important role in this. And, and I'm convinced the CAC agrees that they need to play an important role in this. These are, these are citizens that care passionately about our community, care passionately about the public safety of our community and raise their hands and volunteer to come serve in this capacity and all very, very capable folks. To that end, you know, Monday night, the chief and CAC met and, and this was a portion of their discussion was around events and communication and bringing people together. And we would ask them to, to continue to make that more robust and more active and more aggressive in terms of getting out and getting the community and the police together. We have got to work on it. And again, I think it's one of those things where you never feel like you've done enough. You're fighting that fight every single day of, of working through relationships and awareness and people understanding each other. And so that is an important thing. You know, communication with the public was obviously an element of the CAC report, but even more broadly, it's, it's an incredibly important element of what our law enforcement does every single day and has got to get bigger, certainly as big as we can make it. So I want to come back to one policy thing because I think it's, it's profound and quite frankly, is probably the primary policy that our community and particularly those that have been most actively engaged with us in the last year are most concerned about. And it's also a policy that right now, tonight, you won't find it on the website, and that's the use of force policy. Now, you know, in, in this book, there were a number of ideas and requests related to use of force. And I'll tell you, of all of those questions, I don't remember exactly how many it was, probably eight or nine different ones that were specific to use of force. Every single one of them is addressed within the use of force policy. Okay? And so when we get that policy back up on the website, I encourage people to go read it and certainly it's one that could generate lots of questions and discussion and we would encourage people to engage with us on it. But I'll tell you, every one of those things that's in, in that original list is addressed in that policy. Some key takeaways, all right, and this is just a snapshot, but officers are required to use the lowest level of force that fits the situation. Now, you'll hear people talk about a continuum of force and I think some people understand how that works actually on the scene and others may not. So let me briefly explain because the people that I've talked to that don't understand have a perception that an officer is required to start at the lowest level and work his way up, one step at a time, all the way up to the most deadly type of force. And certainly if the situation allows them to do that, great. The chances that a circumstance that requires some use of force actually has, gives the time and the space to do that is essentially nil. The reality is they're normally walking into a situation where they're directly jumping to a level of use of force that's required for that situation. It is, may not be the lowest level. Many times it is. You know, the lowest level is just presence of the officer. They roll up on the scene, there's people doing something they shouldn't be doing and they see the officer and they stop. That's awesome. That's exactly what's supposed to happen, but sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes they continue to do what they're doing and so then we need our officers to go into some verbal commands and de-escalation, those kind of things. And those are normally the pretty mild situations. But the reality is oftentimes they roll into a situation where it is exceptionally dangerous and they're required to jump directly to a higher level of force to match the situation. But they are obligated by this policy to use the lowest level. So if they're jumping to a level that's up here, when this level would have been fine, they're not okay. And, and their training and their read of the situation is incredibly critically important that they do that the correct way. Officers are required to render aid. So unfortunately, oftentimes these circumstances, somebody gets hurt. As soon as they have secured that situation, they are obligated by policy to take action to render medical aid, get an ambulance there, do whatever it takes, begin rendering aid. You know, unfortunately, we have seen examples around the country where officers were very slow to respond to the needs of someone who they had in custody and that is not right and our policy doesn't allow for that. You must render aid. And also officers are required to report uses of force. And so every one of those, regardless of whether or not a citizen complains, gets reviewed by IA and determined whether or not the officer was in policy. In fact, a very, very small percentage of use of force situations actually result in a citizen complaint. There are some, but it's actually, you go back through the history, is an extremely small percentage. But what's important is officers are required to report and that gives us the opportunity then to go review those and determine if everything was done correctly and should something be different in the future. But let me address why the policy is currently not on the website. It's because it's going through an amendment. So effective just a few days ago, effective tonight, but being written into the amendment in final draft form is an agreement that every use of force in Huntsville, Alabama that results in any serious bodily harm or death will be investigated by the State Bureau of Investigation. HPD, their IA, their major crimes unit will not investigate officer-involved incidents that result in serious bodily harm or death. Now, let me be clear, SBI doesn't assist us in investigating, they investigate, and HPD will not be involved in that investigation. So an outside entity from state, so our state professional investigators will come in anytime we have one of those incidents and conduct the investigation on our behalf. And so that will, is drafted into that policy. They're getting the, the final wordsmithing in place and so I would expect within the next few days, the policy will be repopulated back to the website and you'll see that recent change that we think is critical in this conversation around how we review these things, how we communicate the outcomes to the public, and then ultimately how we deal with it, whether, you know, whether it's within policy or not, ultimately, the State Bureau of Investigation will be making those determinations for us. And so I want to close. We, we talk a lot about modernization. It doesn't work if you don't have an organization that has a culture of continuous learning, continuous, constantly evolving and a culture of always looking for improvement. And my assessment is that HPD does have that. Can it get better? Oh, I guarantee you we can find ways to get it better. But what I see continuously, not only from the chief at his level, but also his subordinate leaders and other officers, is constantly bringing new ideas, concerns and things that we can look at, best practices, reviewing best practice from other parts of the country, learning from other people's successes or failures, learning from agencies that conduct training, that, that conduct certifications and looking to constantly improve and we're certainly looking for ideas from anybody in our community that has concerns and we will address every one of those. You know, and implementation of CIT is a great example of that and there's, and there's many others. So with that, I'd like to pause here and take on any questions that council might have.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Hamilton, for, for your comments and your presentation tonight. May I suggest council members that we take a break for 10 minutes? Give us a chance to stand up, stretch our legs, get a breath, and we will come back at 6:45 and share our comments and questions for Mr. Hamilton.